So he would fast in Sha'ban and then he would fast in Ramadan. He would be connected, right? There's also other hadith that says to take a break right before Ramadan. If you're fasting in Sha'ban, at least take a couple of days off right before Ramadan, right? So it's not connecting in the sense where you fast the whole Sha'ban and then the whole Ramadan, but we take a break in the middle as well, right? To prepare for Ramadan. So this month of Sha'ban is what we're speaking about, right? This blessed time, right before Ramadan. So as was mentioned in the hadith number one is that it is a month that people neglect. This hadith, this month is a month often neglected as people look forward to the excitement of Ramadan and its long nights of worship, right? The Taraweeh Salaah. Now, what we find happening unfortunately, especially in our, you know, American societies where we have such an abundance of food, is that this month of Ramadan that is supposed to be about staying away from food and drink is actually all about food and drink. You know, a lot of people, you know, they don't eat half as much throughout the year than they do in Ramadan. And you're fasting all day, but at night, pigging out all night. Wa alaikum salam, wa tabarakatuh. And, you know, you'll find a lot of the chefs, they spend their whole days preparing for Iftar and then their nights preparing for Suhur. So it comes back to being all about food again, when this is supposed to be the month that we're staying away from food, right? Or we spend the time, you know, the month before Ramadan, just buying food and, you know, preparing, you know, how we're gonna, what we're gonna eat. But really and truly, this is the time, as Allah (ﷻ) says in Surah Baqarah, that He's prescribed fasting. Why? Why are we fasting in Ramadan? It's just to get Taqwa, just to become closer to Allah (ﷻ). That's the point. The point is getting close to Allah, right? Yes, it's also, you know, a time where a lot of families get together. A lot of Muslims, you know, you don't see them until Ramadan comes up, then you see everybody. Everybody pops out for Ramadan, Taraweeh, right? Many might have seen the videos online, you know? Taraweeh is going on and everybody's in the coffee shops, right? Because, you know, we celebrate it, which is not a problem, but how? Should we celebrate it by going out, by, you know, taking, you know, all this Dunya in, you know, eating and going restaurants and coffee shops and seeing all these things? Now, we're supposed to celebrate it by getting closer to Allah, because this is the month where Shayatin, the Shaytans are locked up, right? That's Ramadan. But Sha'ban, this month that we're in now, the month before Ramadan, this is the month of practice, practice for Ramadan. So the month of Sha'ban is a month of incredible virtue expressly highlighted by our beloved Prophet. It also has great historical significance, as this is the month where the legislation for Ramadan, where this is the month Sha'ban was when Allah told the Prophet ﷺ that now Ramadan is Fardh for you, right? The verses we mentioned about fasting, that fasting is prescribed upon us as it was upon those before us, these were revealed in Sha'ban, the month before, right? Sha'ban is also the month in which the Qibla changed from Jerusalem to Mecca, from Palestine to Mecca. So before, the Muslims used to face Masjidul Aksa, where the Dome of the Rock is, that's where they used to face for Salaah. And then Allah revealed, now face the Ka'ba in Mecca. And there's a masjid in Saudi Arabia called Masjid Qiblatain, because when this revelation came to change from facing Jerusalem to facing Mecca, they were actually in the middle of Salaah. So in the middle of Salaah, they turned, everybody turned. So this is known as the Masjid of Two Qiblas, because that's what they did there, right? Beyond its historical significance, Sha'ban is a month of fasting and increased focus on the Quran, giving it great spiritual significance. So just a little bit about the month. You know, it's the eighth month of the lunar calendar, the Islamic lunar calendar, and it immediately precedes Ramadan, right? The jurist and spiritual author Ibn al-Qayyim al-Jauzi, he beautifully mentioned that the Prophet ﷺ fasted almost all of Sha'ban as a means of glorifying Ramadan, right? The same way that the most beloved of Sunnas is the Sunnah before Fajr, because it glorifies the most beloved of prayers, Fajr, right? Fajr is the most beloved of prayers, because we get out from our nice warm bed, we wash with cold water, so it's very, it's very beloved to Allah (ﷻ). And the two Sunnah before Fajr, the Prophet ﷺ mentioned that they're better than the whole world and everything it contains. Just two Rakaas Sunnah before Fajr. So many, many scholars, they also mention that Sha'ban, this month of Sha'ban is like the Wudhu and then Ramadan is like the Salaah, right? Or this month of Sha'ban is like the two Sunnah we pray before Fajr and then Ramadan is like the Fajr Salaah. So just like you use Sunnah as preparation for the obligatory prayer, so too Sha'ban is a preparation for and a glorification of Ramadan. Ibn al-Qayyim also mentioned that the Prophet ﷺ was known to voluntary fast three days of every month, the white days, right? Thirteen, fourteen and fifteen of every month. But sometimes he was not able to do so. When that happened, he would fast in Sha'ban to make up those days before the obligatory fast of Ramadan. This was the Prophet ﷺ's habit across a range of optional acts of worship, right? Not just fasting, but also, you know, giving charity, reading Quran, right? So this was a habit of the Prophet that he used to do regularly, but sometimes missed, including the night prayer, Tahajjud, right? And other optional fasting, right? And this is the reference for that, where Ibn al-Qayyim says it. It's in Tathib Sunan Abu Dawood. So the first hadith that was mentioned is the neglected month, where the Prophet ﷺ, he said, "It is a month that people neglect between Ramadan and Rajab. It is a month in which deeds are raised to the Lord of the worlds and I like for my deeds to be raised while I am fasting." So this hadith gives us two layers to unpack the gems of this month, right? Firstly, Sha'ban is a month that most people neglect, right? They know Ramadan is coming up next month, so, you know, let me get all the coffee I can in, let me watch all the TV I can, let me get everything out of my system before Ramadan comes. And then Ramadan comes and you cut it off cold turkey. That actually makes it more difficult for you. You know, we might have heard many times teachers tell this, you know, if you fail to prepare, then prepare to fail. So of course, right before Ramadan, we should be preparing for Ramadan. How? Not just the food, but staying away from the food, getting closer to Allah. Because once we start doing that before Ramadan, then we hit Ramadan running. We hit the ground running and it won't be hard for us. Many times you'll see people, you know, the first week of Ramadan, they go hard. They go very hard in the paint. And then by the second week, they start burning out. And then by the last, by the last week of Ramadan, they're crawling. Oh, I can't wait for it to be over. Can't wait for it to be over. But if we start from now, from Sha'ban, then Allah will make it, it'll be easier for us. It's just like preparing for anything, you know? If, you know, you see the runners when they prepare for a marathon, right? They're training all year for one race. So Ramadan is the race for us. Ramadan, this is the time for us to really recharge our Iman, because the Shayatin are locked up. Eleven months of the year, Shaytan is attacking us. He's studying us as believers and he's trying to figure out how to get us to stray, how to get us to slip, how to get us to sin. But Ramadan, they're locked up to show us that we need to strengthen ourselves. It's in Ramadan that we really see what's wrong with me. Because if we do things wrong in Ramadan, then know that it's not Shaytan that's influencing you. It's you that has the problem. It's you that has, you know, it's ourselves that has something to work on, our Nafs. So this is the month that we should take advantage of in order to hit Ramadan running and to take the most, to get the most benefit out of Ramadan, we have to prepare from now. So the spiritual significance is that the scholars suggest that the best time to compete for Allah's pleasure, the best time to compete for Allah's pleasure are those times in which Allah is most likely to be forgotten. So while everybody's out shopping and preparing for Ramadan in the, in the markets, we should be preparing in the Masjid. We should be preparing with Quran. We should be preparing with fasting. So a person striving for excellence will take advantage of these neglected times. And when everyone else is heedless, they will compete for Allah's pleasure. This is one of the reasons the night prayer, Tahajjud, is so special. Everybody else is sleeping, but you're waking up at three o'clock in the morning to pray. That's why it's so special. You're doing something, you're a special person. Everybody else is sleeping and you're up praying. Because worship in these times particularly shows that you truly want the pleasure of Allah. The great polymath Ibn al-Jauzi says that this is the evidence of your insistence upon doing good. If you have to wake up at three o'clock in the morning just to pray, then you really want Allah. You're really searching for Allah. Further evidence of this notion comes from the companions' love for the time between sunset Maghrib and evening Aisha prayers, right? They were commonly referred to as the two Ashas, right? Many time, the companions of the Prophet ﷺ used to love to give life to that time by remembering Allah and citing it as an hour that most people are heedless of, right? Because that's when everybody's just winding down, you know? You worked all day, now you're, you know, you're coming home from work, you just pray real quick and then you're gonna go eat, chill, right? But they would take advantage of it and read more Quran during that time. Similarly, the reward for the one who remembers Allah upon entering the marketplace is so grand. The granting of a million good deeds, the removal of a million bad deeds and an elevation of a million levels of Jannah, in Jannah and a palace therein. Because that, this is the time that we are least likely to remember Allah and the worship of Him is often neglected. So the point here is that taking advantage of times when other people are forgetting Allah and being that one shining light to remember Allah in those times has very great and grand benefits. Hadith narrated by Abdullah ibn Umar, the son of Umar ibn Khattab, that the Messenger of Allah ﷺ said, "Whoever enters the market and then he says, 'La ilaha illa Allah,' there's no God but Allah, la shariqalah. He's alone without any partners. Lahul mulk, to him belongs the dominion, walahul hamd and all praise. Yuhyi wa yumiit, he causes life and he causes death. Wa huwah hayyil la yamut, and he lives and does not die. Biyadihi khair, all good is in his hand. Wa huwah ala kulli sha'in qadir, and he is all-powerful of all things." So whoever enters the market and says this, Allah will record for him thousands of good deeds, erase thousands of bad deeds and raise him by thousands of degrees, meaning in Jannah. On this notion, Ibn Rajab, he points out that the worship done when people are generally heedless should be done as secretly as possible, because these are the deeds of Ihsan, of excellence, and should therefore be done in the best manner possible. So we do our best and we don't show off with it. We don't tell everybody, "Come on, let's go, let's go, let's go." Nah, the best thing for you to do is go in a corner where nobody can see you and let them go ahead, forgetting Allah. You know, you might give a little small reminder, it's okay, but don't try, don't stress yourself out trying to get everybody. You can't just go to the mall and tell everybody, "Come on, let's pray." They're gonna just ignore you. Ibrahim Ataymi reported, "A man in front of Umar ibn Khattab, may Allah be pleased with him, radhiyallahu anhu, was saying, 'Oh Allah, make me among the few.'" So this was in the time when Umar was the caliph, right? So the Prophet ﷺ passed away, Abu Bakr passed away. Umar is the leader of the Muslims, Amir al-Mu'mineen. And he sees somebody making Dua, saying, "Oh Allah, make me among the few. Make me among the few." So Umar says, "What is this Dua? What is this supplication? What do you mean by the few?" The man said, "I heard Allah (ﷻ) say, 'Wa qaleelum min igaadiyash shakur.' And few of my servants are grateful. So I call upon Allah to make me among those few." And then Umar, he started crying and he said, "All of the people know better than Umar. The people know better than me." What a humbling experience. Because he didn't realize, "What do you mean? You wanna be the few?" He said, and the man says, "Didn't Allah say this? Only few of my servants are grateful. So may Allah make us among the few. Allahumma Amin." And then just to cite a few of these verses where Allah (ﷻ) talked about the few, right? One, Surah Sabah, chapter thirty-four, verse thirteen. Allah (ﷻ) says, "They made for him whatever he desired of sanctuaries, statues, basins and as large as reservoirs and cooking pots fixed into the ground. And we ordered work gratefully, oh family of David." He's talking about the people of Dawud, David. "And only a few of my servants are truly grateful." Right? So this is the quote that the man was saying to Umar. "Few of my servants are grateful." Another place in the Quran, Surah Nammal, chapter twenty-seven, verse seventy-three. Allah (ﷻ) says, "Surely your Lord is ever bountiful to humanity." And the Tafsir had mentioned that, "How is he bountiful to humanity? He delays their punishment and allows us time to repent. But most of them are ungrateful. So you are grateful, most are ungrateful." And then in Surah Waqia, chapter fifty-six, verses ten to fourteen, Allah (ﷻ) he says, "And foremost will be the foremost," right? Meaning the foremost in this Dunya will be the foremost in paradise. The foremost in faith here in this Dunya will be the foremost in paradise. Where the foremost, those are who are ahead of everybody else, right? They are the ones nearest to Allah in the gardens of bliss, fi jannatin na'im. A multitude from the early generations, right? A lot, a lot from the earlier generations and a few from the later generations. And the later generations is us. So these are a few verses where Allah (ﷻ) talks about the, um, the few. Now, next, I wrote just a couple little pointers of times to shine, right? Where are these times when there's only a few people doing good, right? What are different times that we can do? That where we do good and will shine in the eyes of Allah? Where, look, all these people are doing things, but look at this one right here. This one right here is doing something good. So one is doing when others are not doing, right? Example Tahajjud, right? The night prayer, right? Everyone is sleeping and only a few people are up for Tahajjud every day. Only a few. And they shine like stars to Allah and the angels in the heavens, they see. So that's one, when you do while others are not doing. And then another is doing what isn't expected of you in your circumstances. For example, forgiving, right? Somebody wrongs you, somebody oppresses you, somebody disses you, right? Somebody doesn't give you your right. You're allowed to take that right, right? You're allowed to respond, right? An eye for an eye is in Islam. What is better than that? Forgiveness. So when you give up your right and you do what's not expected of you for the sake of Allah, for the pleasure of Allah, that's also a time to shine, right? That's something that makes you stand out in the eyes of Allah. And then also doing more of what everyone else is doing, right? So for example, voluntary fasts, right? So you have, there's three main voluntary fasts. One would be the white days of every month, right? Thirteen, fourteen and fifteen of every lunar month. So that's three days every month. That's good, it's very good. What's more than that? There's also a Sunnah fast for every Monday and Thursday. So that'll be eight days every month. So that's more than just the three days. But then you got somebody that's doing Monday and Thursday and the three days. So now that's eleven days a month. And then you have somebody that's doing the best of all fasts, which the Prophet ﷺ mentioned, the fast of David of Dawud, which is fasting every other day. Fast one day, don't fast one day. Fast one day, don't fast one day. That's even more, that's fifty, at least fifteen days out of the month. So that's another way to shine in the eyes of Allah, doing more than everyone else, doing extra Sunnah Salaah, doing extra Nafal Salaah, right? Doing more in Tahajjud, right? And then another tip is doing quicker or doing more enthusiastically than everyone else. Example hastening when others are lazy, right? Everybody's going to sleep all night and, you know, men like Yusuf are up all night studying. Alhamdulillah, may Allah accept, you know, every, doing things when other people are lazy, right? Doing things when everybody's saying, "Nah, it's time to chill." It's Eid, right? Eid comes around and everybody's just, "Let's celebrate, let's celebrate, let's celebrate." But then you have one person that says, "You know what? I'm gonna celebrate by reading a whole Quran today. I'm gonna celebrate by doing more worship, right? By the way, it's haram to fast on Eid, okay? We're not allowed to fast on Eid. That's the only time it's haram to fast, right? And of course, for women on their cycles and so forth. But doing more enthusiastically than everyone else, right? Also rushing to Salaah, right? Not running to Salaah, but the time for Salaah comes in. You have one person that says, "All right, the time for Salaah is in. Let me go pray right away." You have another person that says, "All right, let me just finish what I'm doing and then I'll pray." Right? "Let me just finish this movie and then I'll pray." May Allah protect us. So these are times to shine. So a tip here is that we should seize the opportunities to worship Allah in times that are often neglected, right? Don't delay and make your intention and plan to fast, read the Quran and increase in Vighr, the remembrance of Allah, right? The one habit that you can form in Sha'ban is to pray two extra Rakaas between Maghrib and Aisha. That was a time that was beloved to the companions of the Prophet ﷺ. And then in Ramadan, the time between Maghrib and Aisha, when most people are rewarding themselves for a long day of fasting, also becomes a special time to remember Allah when others are heedless, right? Everybody stuffing their face, right? But you got all night after Aisha, Insha Allah, right? So we take advantage of these times. May Allah allow us to make it easy. So take advantage of the inattentiveness of people in Sha'ban. Everyone is busy preparing food, et cetera, for Ramadan, but not their hearts. So let's take advantage and prepare our hearts. So a couple more benefits of reviving neglected times with acts of obedience, right? One is that concealed actions are always greater, right? Abu Hurairah radhiyallahu anhu, he reported that the Prophet ﷺ said, "There are seven on whom Allah will shade on the day when there is no shade but His." Which day is this? It's the Day of Judgment, right? And the seven are listed here, right? But the one we're focusing on is the one who spends in charity and hides it such that his right hand does not know what his left hand has given, right? So doing concealed actions will always be greater, right? And that's what happens in a neglected time, you know? When everyone else is being heedless or busy with other things and you decide to go in a corner and pray, that's when you're gonna do it concealingly, right? If you're sincere, you don't need to let everybody know, "Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go pray right now. I feel like praying." You don't need to let everybody know. And on top of that, doing things when other people are neglectful, it's harder on your, on the inner self, because it's always easier to follow the crowd. It's always easier, but it's harder on your own Nafs. And this is, this is what true Jihad is. Jihad or Nafs is being hard on yourself. And then lastly, one person doing an act of obedience can repel calamities from the rest, right? So there's a type of Fardh called Fardh Kifaya, right? Where if at least one person in a community is doing it, then the whole community is saved from certain calamities, right? For example, the Irthikaf, right? The last ten nights of Ramadan, you'll, many, many might know that, you know, the, there's a Sunnah for the men to spend the last ten days and nights in the Masjid. Go to the Masjid, get your sleeping bag, you know, get what you need, take time off from work and go stay in the Masjid for ten days. But what is mentioned is that if nobody in a whole community is doing it, then the whole community is sinful. Everybody doesn't have to do it, but somebody gotta do it, right? Similarly, somebody has, in every community, has to study Islam, right? Everybody can't claim, you know, you got a thousand people in a village, but nobody goes to study. But we're just Muslim. Somebody has to learn. Somebody has to go to study, right? So one person doing an act of obedience can save everyone else. So, you know, let us all strive to be that, that person. When everyone else is heedless of Allah, that we are remembering Allah, right? And we don't neglect this month, as the Prophet ﷺ said in this hadith, right? That it's a month that people neglect, Sha'ban. So may Allah make it easy and may Allah allow us not to neglect it and to take advantage of it in preparation for Ramadan. Allahumma Amin. So next we have a comparison, well, not really a comparison, more like a connection between the month of Quran and the month of the reciters, right? The month of Quran, what is the month of Quran? Ramadan. Ramadan is the month of Quran. This is the month in which the Quran was revealed, right? And the Quran is the best book, you know? It's, it's not even a part of creation, the Quran. The pages are a creation, the ink is creation, but the words itself, the content itself, is that of the Creator. It's the words of the Creator, Allah (ﷻ). This is the greatest guidance ever sent to mankind with clear proofs of guidance and the decisive authority, right? The clear guidance, what is right, what is wrong, what to do, what not to do, what to go towards, what to stay away from. So the Tafsir of this verse, right? Surah Baqarah, verse one eighty-five, Ibn Khatiyyah, he mentions, just a piece of the Tafsir, not the whole thing. He mentions that Allah (ﷻ) praised the month of Ramadan out of the other months by choosing it to send down the glorious Quran, just as he did for all of the divine books he revealed to the prophets. So a hadith narrated by Imam Ahmed, that Wasilah Ibn al-Ashqah said that the Messenger of Allah ﷺ said, "That the pages, the suhuf of Ibrahim were revealed during the first night of Ramadan. The Torah given to Moses was revealed during the sixth night of Ramadan. The Injil given to Jesus, Giza (عليه السلام), was revealed during the thirteenth night of Ramadan. And Allah revealed the Quran on the twenty-fourth night of Ramadan." That was when Allah brought it down from the tablet to the lowest heaven. So not just the Quran was revealed in Ramadan, but also Suhuf Ibrahim, page is given to Ibrahim, right? The Torah, the Bible, the Injil, the Gospel was also given in Ramadan. So we have some virtues of the Quran now, where Allah (ﷻ) said in that verse that it is a guidance for mankind and clear proofs for the guidance and the criterion, right? The distinct, the, um, what was it? Decisive authority, right? Between right and wrong. Here Allah (ﷻ) praised the Quran, which he revealed as guidance for the hearts of those who believe in it and adheres to its command. And then he also said, "Clear proofs," meaning as clear and unambiguous signs and unequivocal proof for those who understand them. You know, when you look into the miracles of the Quran and things that he talked about, you know, the stages of the embryo development and the alternation of the sun and moon and, you know, the, you know, the salt water and fresh water. And you know, the, you know, the salt water and fresh water, so many miracles in the Quran. It's clear signs that this is from Allah. Impossible that it could have been from a man that could not read and write. These proofs testify to the truth of the Quran. Its guidance, which is the opposite of misguidance. And how it guides to the straight path, which is the opposite of the wrong path. And the distinction between truth and falsehood. And the permissible and the prohibited, right, what is halal, what is haram? Quran tells us. And using the Sunnah, we get the further, you know, diving into an explanation of it. So this is from Ibn Kathir. So just as fasting in Sha'ban is neglected by many, so too is reading Quran in the month of Sha'ban. Whereas we all intend to increase the amount of Quran we read in Ramadan, Sha'ban is the time that the reciters prepare themselves for the recitation of Ramadan. Right, so you know, anybody that you see that leads the Tarawih Salaah, you'll see in Sha'ban, we read the most, we read even more than Ramadan. Because Ramadan, we're fasting. Right, but in order to prepare for leading Tarawih, Sha'ban is the month where we have to really go hard and study and read more Quran. And then in Ramadan, we read it in Salaah. Right, so Sha'ban was known by some of the pious predecessors, the Salaf, as the month of the reciters because of how much the Quran people would read during it. Right, Salama Ibn Kuhalal Qufi. Right, he was one of the Salaf, the early generation of believers, none of the Tabi'een, one of the Tabi'een. He narrated that when the month of Sha'ban approached, his people freed their time to recite Quran. The month of, he said, this month of Sha'ban is the month of the reciters. So if you'd like to be one of the reciters of the Quran, now is the time to start. Right, Ramadan is the month of the Quran. And Sha'ban is the month of the reciters of the Quran. Another narration states that when Sha'ban would begin, Abra ibn Qais would close his door for Sha'ban, not Ramadan, for Sha'ban. And devote himself to the recitation of Quran. Right? And these are found in Abdurrahman Ibn Rajab Al Hambali, his book, La Taif Al Ma'arif. So Sha'ban is a month of preparation for Ramadan. Right, a time to review the Quran, a time to increase in fasting. Right, a time to prepare for Ramadan. So a very practical tip going into the month of Sha'ban is to take the goal that you have for recitation during Ramadan and do half of it in month of Sha'ban. So if you're planning to recite the whole Quran once in Ramadan, then do half of it in Sha'ban. Then this will make achieving your Ramadan goal easier because you've already prepared yourself in that way. Which will make the task ahead familiar. And thus you'll be able to push yourself further. Right, similarly with the fasting. Right, if we increase in fasting during this month. Right, even if it's just, you know, twice a week, Monday and Thursday. It'll be easier for us to fast the full 30 days, Insha Allah, for Ramadan. Much easier than if you don't fast at all and we're eating all the time, then we're gonna be very hungry during Ramadan and it'll be tough. May Allah make it easy for us. So the first part of the Huthbawaz about how Sha'ban is a neglected month and we should take advantage of these neglected times. The second part is that Sha'ban is also a month for the reciters and the recitation of Quran. And then lastly, we would like to speak about the 15th of Sha'ban, which is a night of forgiveness. So in this Hadith, Abu Musa al-Ashari reported that the Messenger of Allah, SAW said, "Verily Allah looks down in the middle night of Sha'ban," meaning the 15th, "and He forgives all of His creatures except for an idolater or one carrying hostility." Right, Imam Asanaani commented, he said, "The one carrying hostility means carrying malice." Some have explained it as referring to the people of heretical innovations, the Bidha boys, who break away from the united community. But that is not the linguistic meaning. Right, the linguistic meaning is literally just carrying hostility. Right, unless they were actually those that broke away from the united community, from the Jama'ah, unless they were actually hostile and malicious. Right, what I would like to point out here is the word being used. Muhashin, Mushahin. Right, the Mushahin, that's the one carrying hostility. Another Hadith on the authority of Abu Hurairah, who Prophet SAW said, "The gates of paradise are opened on Mondays and on Thursdays. And every servant of Allah who associates nothing with Allah will be forgiven." Right, so in the last Hadith, it mentioned the idolater. Right, the Mushrik. And here, talking about Mondays and Thursdays, everyone is forgiven except who, so those who associate nothing with Allah are forgiven. So a person that does associate is a Mushrik, the idolater. Right, and also except for the man who has a grudge against his brother. Right, and also a sister. It will be said, delay these two until they are reconciled. And he repeated it, delay these two until they are reconciled. So this is speaking about Mondays and Thursdays. But this also uses the same word again, Shahnaat. Shahnaat, the one who has a grudge. Right, the one who is carrying hostility. And then one more Hadith where the Prophet narrated by Abu Hurairah again, that the Prophet SAW said, "Angels come to you in succession by night and day. And all of them get together at the time of Fajr and Asr. Those who have passed the night with you or stayed with you, they ascend to the heaven. And Allah asks them, though He knows everything about you well, "In what state did you leave my slaves?" And they reply, "When we left them, they were praying, and when we reached them, they were praying." Right, so what is mentioned here is that the angels, they also, they alternate on Fajr and Asr time daily. Right, they bring your deeds up to Allah, SAW. So in this third Hadith, where what's taken notice of is that the deeds are being brought up. Right, the deeds are also brought up on Mondays and Thursdays. And the deeds are also brought up on the 15th of Sha'ban. Right, these are times when our deeds are brought up to Allah. And Allah knows all. So a narration from Ikrima Al Barbari, the bondsman of Abdullah ibn Abbas, the great Mufassir, is frequently quoted in which he calls the 15th of Sha'ban, "The night of exemption," right, Leilaul Baraa, which is the night where, that we are freed from the hellfire. Right, and it's found in this book by Muhammad Al Qurtubi, Al Jamir, Al Ihkamul Quran. So the Prophet SAW, he said that Sha'ban is a month in which deeds are presented to Allah. And the 15th is a particular night that Allah looks at those deeds and forgives all of them. So taking advantage of this night, the 15th, will allow us to enter Ramadan with amnesty, free from the burden of our sins with only the longing of our Creator remaining. Now, many scholars have written about observing the 15th of Sha'ban. And whilst we should fill the night with worship, I would like to mention that there are no specific acts that have been mentioned by the Prophet SAW to be singled out on this night. Right, a question came in the Brothers Chat on IG. And this is the answer to that, that there is nothing specific. Right, there are narrations that mention fasting on the 15th of Sha'ban, right, and staying up at night to pray on the 15th of Sha'ban, but these Hadiths are actually weak and some are even fabricated. So I wrote a little bit on it, the vast majority of the narrations about the 15th of Sha'ban are in fact weak or fabricated even. The way that the Prophet SAW described the month of Sha'ban as a whole is very similar to how he described Mondays and Thursdays. Right, that the deeds are presented to Allah, that Allah forgives them. Right, and also in the morning at Fajr time and then Asr in the afternoon. Right, deeds are presented to Allah, the angels, they change shifts. And they're presented to Allah. So they're presented to Allah on a weekly basis on Monday and Thursday. And then Sha'ban as a month as a whole. And then the Prophet SAW said, "The deeds are presented to Allah annually in the month of Sha'ban, just as we go into Ramadan." So observing the 15th day of Sha'ban in fasting, it's Sunnah, yes, but not because it's the 15th of Sha'ban. It's Sunnah because it's the 15th of the month. Right, 13th, 14th and 15th of every Islamic month is a Sunnah fast, the white days. So the 15th is a part of those white days, right? But single out the 15th of Sha'ban that we should fast on the 15th of Sha'ban, there's, the Hadith is very weak. Right, I didn't even bother to bring it into this document, right, it's weak. Right, however, some of the scholars mentioned, just by the collection of narrations, right, even if the vast majority of them are fabricated and weak, that there is enough to say that in general, a person should spend the night in worship. Right, because it's definitely a special, the Hadith mentioning the 15th of Sha'ban is still there. Right, so there's definitely something special about it. So the scholars mention that it's still good to do something extra. Right, so in general, a person should spend the night in worship and in the way that the Prophet SAW would worship on a regular basis. Because on a regular basis, the Prophet would stay up praying Salaah all night. Right, so Qiyam, Quran, Vighr, right, things of that sort. Right, there is no room for innovative practice. Right, so it's not to say you should do this or you should do that on the 15th of Sha'ban. There's nothing in the Hadith mentioning it. Right, the only thing that's mentioned in the Hadith about the 15th of Sha'ban is this right here. Right, that Allah looks down and He forgives His creatures except for idolater and one carrying hostility. That's the only thing that's mentioned, so whatever you want to do to get closer to Allah, do it. The greatest act of worship that one can do on this night or on a Monday and Thursday. Right, the 15th of Sha'ban, or even in general, when deeds are presented to Allah, is to remove Shahnaat. Right, so as we mentioned earlier, this word Shahnaat. Right, he talked about the one carrying hostility. Right, Mushahin. And then he also talked about the man who has a grudge against his brother. Right, Shahnaat, these come from the same word. Right, being hostile or malicious. Right, carrying a grudge. This is what I want to point out, that the greatest act somebody can do is to remove that. Right, the same word is used twice. Right, Shahnaat in the Arabic language, it includes Baghdah and Adawa, which is enmity and grudges. Right, it also includes Al-hekt, which is the rights. Right, oh, this person took my right and, you know, he oppressed me and now I hate him for the rest of my life. Can never forgive him. Right, this is a very Shahnaat, it's a very strong grudge. Right, and the thing about this Shahnaat, this strong grudge, it's consistent. Right, when you read the way that the scholar spoke about it, it's a hatred that consumes your heart. It consumes your heart so much that you don't have the ability to focus on your Creator because of how severe your hatred is for that one person, for that one of His creation. You know, the Prophet SAW also mentioned in the Hadith that Allah is merciful towards us as much as we are merciful to His creation. So if you want Allah, SAW to forgive us, we should forgive His creation. Right? Yes, yes, Alhamdulillah, so the, yes, the 15th of Sha'ban will be in two weeks, Insha Allah. Today is the first, right, so the 15th would be, uh, two weeks from now, or would that be the fourth? Right, so the night of the third and the fourth would be the 15th day. Right, but the night of the third would be the 15th night of Sha'ban. Right, and that's what is mentioned in the Hadith on the night of the 15th. So that would be two Tuesdays from now at night, Insha Allah. So going back to Shahnaat, right, Shahnaat in the, in the Arabic language is that you're so obsessed with your hatred of someone else. Right, and that grudge that you have with someone else that you can't move on. Right, it's stuck with you and it consumes you, it overwhelms you. Right, then you're not finding the ability to connect to Allah, SAW, the way that you should. Right, it's also mentioned, you know, that's why even one of the Sunnas of going to sleep every night is forgiving everyone. Forgive everyone every night before you go to sleep. Because you don't know if you'll wake up the next day. So another Hadith narrated by Abu Hurairah, that the Prophet SAW he said, "By Allah, the Son of Mary, Isa, will descend as a just ruler. He will abolish the cross, kill the swine, annul the tribute. But he will leave the she camel such that no one collects from it. And he will cause rancor, hatred and envy to disappear. And he will call people to give their wealth in charity, but no one will need it. Meaning there will be abundance of wealth in the Ummah." But what I want to highlight here is rancor, hatred and envy. And the word that is used again, Shahnaat. So imagine when Isa comes, this is one of the things, the same word that we're speaking about, this, this hatred, this animosity, this hostility, this maliciousness that we have, this holding a grudge. Isa, will come and he will abolish it. When Isa, returns, the Prophet SAW mentioned, he abolishes idolatry, Shirk, any type of associating partner with Allah. But he also abolishes a Shahnaat, that there would be no more hatred on earth when Isa, returns. So he establishes the purity of the worship of Allah. And he also establishes the purifying of the hearts towards one another. Or rather, Allah does it through him. That we no longer hold that type of hatred towards one another. And that, that has deep ramifications across the entire world. When Isa, is present, right, it becomes a time of peace. True peace across the whole world. So Shahnaat is a deep hatred that consumes the heart. Just like Monday, Thursday, our deeds are presented to Allah, SAW on this 15th of Sha'ban. So we really need to think, if I've been wanting to make peace with someone, if I've been waiting to remove something from my heart, now is the time. Now is the time to say, I'm not going to hate that person anymore, I'm going to let it go. So I can focus on Allah, so I have nothing holding me back. Forgiveness. So another tip here is that the 15th of Sha'ban is a call to action. Right, this is a time to reflect deeply. Is that grudge worth missing out on this incredible reward? Do I really want my deeds to not be presented to Allah? And to be amongst those people who are not forgiven by Allah on that night? Is my hatred of that person worth me sacrificing the love of Allah? Because as we mentioned on, on the Mondays and Thursdays, Allah says, "Forgive everyone except those who still hold the grudges, delay it until they're reconciled." And he repeated it twice, delay it until they have reconciled. May Allah make it easy for us, may Allah allow us to reconcile with all those people that, you know, have done us wrong. In a beautiful statement, Ibn Rajab, he said that fasting in Sha'ban takes away the hardship of fasting and leaves only the sweetness of it for the time of Ramadan. So if we, you know, get used to fasting from now, then in Ramadan, it's gonna be a breeze. It'll be a breeze. Because anybody that, you know, fasted a lot, they can tell you that if you fast a lot during the year, during Ramadan, it doesn't really feel any, you don't feel it. Like the hunger and the thirst and the, you know, being irritable. Right, the hangry-ness, you don't feel it at all. You actually feel more easier to connect with Allah. easier to connect with Allah all the time. As soon as you see things going on in front of you, it's like, wow, stuff for Allah. Let me look the other way, let me do something else. You know, it's easier to stay away from sin, it's easier to stay away from things that are, you know, displeasing to Allah. So for most of us, the first few days of Ramadan are sluggish. Right? We get used to kicking our old habits, right? A lot of people, you know, all my coffee lovers out there, everybody that I know that loves coffee every single day, that first week of Ramadan, they're having headaches, right? That caffeine withdrawal is real. So the first few days, you know, we get used to kicking our habits and changing our schedule. No, 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 no shade, no shade, everybody. Everybody I know that loves coffee, they go through it. Everyone. Alhamdulillah. So however, by practicing our acts of worship in Sha'ban, we can enter Ramadan with such energy and strength that we only taste the sweetness of our worship. By optimizing our time in Sha'ban, we can begin Ramadan reaping the fruits of our preparation. Right? And as many of my teachers would always say, you know, if you fail to prepare, then prepare to fail. Right? Like, you know, when I was in school, I was, I was always a, what I call a professional crammer. Right? I wouldn't study until the night before a test or two nights before. Then I would start studying and cram everything and, you know, alhamdulillah, I did okay. But imagine if I actually prepared properly throughout, I would have done so much better. You know, so the same way, preparing before Ramadan is gonna make Ramadan just that much easier and that much better. May Allah make it easy for us. So just ending with some Dua. May Allah (ﷻ) allow us to live to see Ramadan. May Allah (ﷻ) accept our deeds in Sha'ban and in Ramadan and always may He purify our hearts so that they can be connected only to Him. So that they can be full of His love, so that they can be dedicated solely to His longing, to longing for His pleasure. And that Ramadan can be the activation of that love and the longing for Allah. May Allah (ﷻ) forgive us and forgive our brothers and sisters who have harmed us. May He forgive us for the harm that we may have done to our brothers and sisters, knowingly or unknowingly. May He forgive us and grant us the capacity to forgive others and give others the capacity to forgive us. May He make us a people that stand up in the night and long for His pleasure and His forgiveness every single night. May Allah (ﷻ) allow our days to be in service to Him by serving His creation. May Allah (ﷻ) make us among those that spend the night in prayer and those that spend in charity during the day. And that anchor themselves in the prayer throughout day and night. And that we remember Allah (ﷻ) throughout day and night. May Allah (ﷻ) allow us to have the best Ramadan of our lives this year, Allahumma Amin. So alhamdulillah, that was, you know, my khutbah really on Sha'ban. This is just about taking advantage of this month. So may Allah make it easy for us. And if anyone else, I'll open the floor now to any, you know, questions, comments, concerns, InshaAllah. If anybody can, if anybody has any comments or questions or anything, you can unmute, InshaAllah.
You dropped on the book.
Nah, definitely not dropping a book. This is just a little khutbah.
Yeah, it was awesome. Thank you. Thank you for taking the book for us.
Alhamdulillah. May Allah accept it and grant us benefit. And allow us to practice upon, you know, everything that we learn. And make everything that we learn beneficial, truly beneficial to us. May Allah grant us ease and well-being in all of our affairs. May Allah heal all of our sick and may Allah forgive all of our loved ones who passed away. May Allah make their graves spacious. May Allah grant us all genital for those, may Allah protect us from the fire. Allahumma Amin. Alhamdulillah. Okay, InshaAllah. So if nobody has any questions or comments, then InshaAllah we'll close off. Barakallah feikum. May Allah grant us all ease and all of our affairs. And may Allah allow us to reach Ramadan and take full advantage of Ramadan. And allow us to exit Ramadan with renewed Iman and with a clean slate and forgiveness. And may He allow us to witness Leila tul Qadr. And may, may He allow us to, you know, keep going after Ramadan as well. Because Ramadan is, Ramadan is that training ground. Shaytaan is locked up, so we have to train ourselves. So that for the next 11 months after Ramadan, we're able to fight Shaytaan. Because he's gonna be at it. He's definitely gonna be at it. So may Allah make it easy. May Allah accept all of our efforts and forgive our shortcomings. Yeah, anything that I said that is good is from Allah and anything that I said that is wrong is from myself. Alhamdulillah. So with that, we'll close off, InshaAllah. Subhanakallahumma wa bihamdik. Nasheedu anla ilaha illa anta nastaghfiruk wa natabi ilaiq. Subhana Rabbika Rabbil Azzaati ya amma yasifun wa salaamun ala al-mursalin. Alhamdulillahi Rabbil Aalameen. Alhamdulillah. I would also like to remind everyone that I'm doing free Quran classes for everyone, for everyone on the block, for this month of Sha'ban in preparation for Ramadan, because Ramadan is a time where my classes are closed. Uh, you know, it's a me time, you know, focusing, InshaAllah. So, you know, take advantage, InshaAllah. Um, this weekend actually is, um, a bit busy for me. Um, so tomorrow's class and Saturday, the group classes are gonna be canceled for this, for this week. But the private classes are still open and free for everyone on the block, so, InshaAllah. I'll repost the link, right? If anybody would like to...